See, you go open the meeting. How long is that for you?
No, I just turned it to the right time the other day.
It's already five.
It's five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Open the meeting. Okay, boss, do you want us to do for a sign?
Um, why don't we start with signing some things here, get the accounts payable and payroll and some of those.
Yep.
On the agenda there.
Yep.
Get those on the way.
Accounts payable manifest in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, fifty-one cents.
Second.
And a payroll manifest in the amount of forty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents.
Enter. Just for clarification, that accounts payable had the school and the county payments there.
Yeah, yeah, I figured. Um, do we need a motion on this deed?
Which one is that?
The deed.
For tax sale from Sherwood.
The Sherwood first.
One oh one, lot thirty-six.
One oh one.
No, you guys settled that, it's just you have to sign it and then we have to have it revised. Because you had a made a motion last.
Yes.
Week, or two weeks ago. Okay.
And then can you pass it to?
Hmm?
And then we have religious abatements for Beulah Fellowship Church of the Woods and Canterbury Community Church.
Yeah, you don't need a motion on those.
We don't need a motion. Is there a property tax supplement warrant via someone?
It should be there. It should have a yellow, it should have been in the same folder with the religious abatements.
Maybe a patch that kind of stuck maybe.
Yeah, with a little heart.
So, can we have some background on this? On my, uh...
I didn't, I was up today, so let Sam appear, let me just think quick.
That's for the, um, the unauthorized deed transfer?
Oh, yes, yep. Yep. So this is the, um, that piece of property up on Whitney Hill Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, this is just, uh, letting them know, um, that, uh... Or this is just a letter saying the taxes are owed on this piece of property. And I know further down in the, uh, agenda, we have, we have a discussion on this. Uh, right now, it's, uh, just for the sake of keeping things going. We're waiting for our attorney, our attorney is in discussions with the attorney for the, uh, Mr. Kimbrells to set up a date where we can all get together and compare paperwork. Sam has drafted or has gotten that family tree, so to speak, of all of the heirs of Mr. Lumbering. Um, and we're sending, we drafted a letter, we're gonna be sending a letter out to them, trying to find out who actually owns the property. But in the meantime, we're gonna try and meet with Mr. Kimbrell's attorney to try and see if he has paperwork that he feels may entitle him to that property.
Yeah, so I tried to figure that out.
Yeah, yeah. So that's just confirming that there are taxes due on that piece of property.
You can have a chance to read the minutes?
Yeah. So the minutes, uh, the copy that you were sent has further been revised.
Okay.
The copy, the printed copy that you have now, um, if you go to one, two, the third page, in the back of the second page, you can see the highlights, the script views and the revisions. Cal had conversations with Randy and, um, so some of the discussion points that he had about the school withdrawal, the change just a little bit. Cal had conversations with Randy and, um, so some of the discussion points that he had about the school withdrawal, the change just a little bit.
So we don't need to amend this or anything?
Well, what you vote on is amended, this is.
As amended, yeah.
Yeah, as amended, yes.
I move we approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting as amended.
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
All right. Yep. So we're zipping right along, so I'll just hit on a couple of new business things. Um, the Merrimack County, uh, twenty twenty-four budget proposal, I have a letter here. Their proposed budget is, uh, going up nine percent. So, uh... Uh, actually, it reflects an overall increase to general fund expenses of eight and a half, eight point seven five percent above the two thousand twenty-three budget. Utilizes some, some money, uh, of the fund balance to, to balance the rest. I have the budget here, uh, if you guys want a copy of it, I can make copies of it and get it to you, but, um, I didn't get a chance to look at it, but it's got some, some highlights here, so if you guys want to look at it. But it is the Merrimack County budget. Um, they do say that, um, let's see, uh... First, the health costs, they went up almost four percent. Health insurance went up seven, three quarters percent. So this is, they, they outlined some of those in this. So let's see, it's a, I'll have it at the office if you want the details on it. Um, let's see, I already did the update, update on that deed. Um, I do have, uh, another letter from the town of Northfield on Ayers Road. John, did you get a chance to see this in the email that I sent you? Would you guys see it any?
I did, yeah.
So.
No, I didn't.
I'll just read the letter real quick. Uh, understanding agreement that two thousand reached in regard to maintenance of Ayers Road to Route one thirty-two, the start of the Class Six portion, Oak Hill Road from Northfield to the Canterbury Town Line, to the intersection of Inverdale Road and Fellows Hill Road from the Northfield Canterbury Town Line to the Northfield Belmont Town Line. It says here Canterbury agrees to plow and perform winter maintenance only on Fellows Hill Road in exchange for Northfield plowing and performing winter maintenance on Ayers Road and Oak Hill Road. Canterbury will perform summer, summer maintenance on Ayers Road and Northfield will contribute one hundred and fifty dollars each year to assist with the maintenance cost for the Northfield portions of Ayers Road. A hundred and fifty dollars. I sent an email back to the town administrator in Northfield saying, is this a typo? Did you mean fifteen hundred dollars? She said, no, uh, that's correct. They figured twenty percent of what they spent, there's twenty percent of, of that road that's in Northfield. And, and so they figured twenty percent of what they spent on summer maintenance this year. So I said, so you only spent seven hundred and fifty dollars in summer maintenance on that road? She said, yes. So, I, I figured I'd better get together with John and talk about this and we'll, 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 we'll come back with you guys to something else. I was like, a hundred and fifty dollars? What, that won't drive the Grader up there back, you know? I'm sorry, it's, it's not gonna do it, so anyway, I'll...
I went up over there the other day, a piece of it's been paved beyond the Canterbury-Northfield line. I don't know if that's into Belmont or something like that.
You mean, where?
If you go past the intersection, the four-way intersection.
You mean on Shaker Road?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Fellows Hill.
Yeah.
Yes. So Fellows Hill was paved this summer?
No, a piece of it, looks like a piece of it was. Couldn't quite understand what was happening.
On Fellows Hill?
Yes.
Yeah, Belmont did a, uh, like a hundred-foot section.
Okay, yeah.
That was blown in fire.
But was that in Belmont or?
That was in Belmont.
That was Belmont's.
Just above the deer farm.
Yes.
Yeah, so the portion we paved is, uh, from, uh... The four-way intersection at Old Hancock, north about three quarters of a mile or so.
We went, we went to Old Gilmington or the Town Line this year.
Oh, I meant Old Gilmington, not here, Old Gilmington, right. Which is, which is about three quarters of a mile.
Yeah.
It's the shady, shady lane.
We had a mile and a third paved this year.
Oh, oh.
Of Shaker.
Shaker. Um, let's see, uh, Cal has been doing, um, investigating, uh, other companies to host the website. We've had, that's the last two town meetings, we had people with concerns about the website. So we have gotten some prices in, should have been a RFP, got some prices in, we're looking at around ten thousand dollars should cover everything. We have three or four files and so we're gonna go through them, find out the details, try and come up with one that meets our requirements and then we'll bring it to you guys afterward. But we're looking at like a ten thousand dollar or four or five for that. And, uh, quick update on the solar array up here. We had problems with the, one at the library, one of the, one of the, uh, units at the library and it has been repaired, it was eight hundred, a little over eight hundred dollars. Found some wire nuts that were bad. Jim Snyder sent this along and some recommendations, um, so we'll, we'll look at that and figure out what we're gonna do. But it's repaired now, it's all, it's working good now. And, um... Do you know Randy wasn't coming tonight, do you know?
Randy can't make it.
Okay. Um, would you guys, you know, did she hear from the court on Friday?
I do not know.
No.
Department of Education? She did not?
I spoke to her this morning, she hasn't heard anything yet, she called them back and she's hoping by the end of the week.
Um, Allison, I, I'm gonna give a quick update and if you have any additional information.
I'm not actually on that subcommittee, so I, I...
Yeah, well, I just, Calvin, if you wanna, um, just an update, we've sent our attorney, um, information on the school withdrawal with some questions about warrant articles, when they should be presented. Um, hopefully some clarifications. They sent me an email back. To best of my knowledge, right now, it's still at the Department of Education. We're waiting for them to, we are not on the agenda, it'll be December fourteenth. That is, I know that's true. Um, and there was some confusion apparently that they said that they didn't even know that they were supposed to be involved in this, which is, is, I'm not aware, but as far as we know on the committee,
they need to review it before any steps can be made.
And I, I read the RSA again today and it certainly, to me, it spells out that the Department of Education will receive this information and either approve it or not approve it. So I'm not sure what the confusion on their part is.
I, I think right now, the way it sits is, last I spoke to Randy, they still haven't accepted the, the reports, so they haven't reviewed them and pushed them as an okay for, to be heard in at the meetings.
Yeah.
So they, they're aware of the time crunch with the warrant articles and in the process.
That's what, that was the only thing I was gonna bring up and I did, I brought it up with our attorney that we are under a, a deadline to prepare our warrant, uh, for the town meeting. And, um, you know, uh, that's, that's where it stands and if, if it doesn't make it for that, then my guess is we probably have to have a special town meeting or something. Guess what?
Put it on the warrant anyway, you can always, you can always table it or take it off at the town.
That, that was our plan, that's what we figured we were due, um, but I just, you know. So that's, that's the update on the school withdrawal and just, um, I did have a chat with David Brooks from the Cog and Monitor, so there will be a article coming out. I told him, look at the information on the school district website, town website. I gave him the history, the two warrant articles and the committee's, uh, reports and so he was gonna write a short article.
Who initiated that, did he reach out to you?
He re, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, and I forwarded his email and contact information to Randy. She had talked with Charlie Croman and they said that they would talk to him, but he called again today and hadn't heard from him and he was under a time commitment too, so.
There was an article in the Monitor, somebody, I believe, about school, you know.
Enrollments.
Enrollments and whatnot, so I don't know whether that.
He asked about that, if enrollment had anything to do with it? And I said, I don't know for sure, I said, but I don't know that it was one of the four running concerns. Um, okay. I think we've made to that, so I think we're ready for the budget committee.
Guys, welcome up here.
Thank you, regular chair.
Oh, yeah, why don't you do that? Who do you have?
I've got Bob Steenson, Kelly Short, Bob Scott Pauling and Briggs Lockwood.
Briggs is not here.
Okay.
Uh, these are your appointment slips, they never got signed, so could you guys sign them and take the oath?
All right, so I'm guessing Steenson, right?
Nope, that's Bob Chapo.
All right.
Bob Steenson is the best.
Bob Bass and Bob Bass, you know.
Yeah.
And then. This one I know.
Thank you.
I feel so relieved to be appointed.
How long has it been?
You might be our longest-serving budget committee member.
Yeah.
I think I might too. Who could miss this?
What it really misses is you and Priscilla fighting over fifty bucks. I really missed when fifty bucks, I really missed it when fifty bucks was meaningful.
Since I'm interrupting, does anybody in the room need an agenda? We've got extras.
Just before we dive too deep into our budget, Mike Turris is here from the school board, school district. Would, there's, uh, some, uh, gonna be some taps, tax implications, tax rate implications for next year, uh, relative to our, our budget and the school budget. So would you guys wanna just touch on that real quick?
Sure. Do I get to just stay here?
Yeah, you can come up, I don't know, this chair, come up or whatever.
Bring your chair up if you want.
Yeah.
So this is Debbie Thompson, business administrator, I'm sure she'll be able to go through, over the overall, what our projection is for the tax impact. I wanna preface this con, this conversation with, the school board has not finalized their budget at this point. We're still in the beginning stages of budget development process. We have a budget workshop, uh, scheduled for tomorrow night. We also have budget on our agenda for our regularly scheduled meeting on December twelfth and we have a tentative budget workshop scheduled for December eighteenth with our goal of a public hearing for them to be able to finalize a budget, a proposed budget on the December eighteenth meeting, so we can have our public hearing in January. So all of this is still in the works right now, um, but we can give you an overview of it as well.
So the biggest things that are impacting the school district budget, um, and the tax rate impact is the fact that we're losing revenue. Um, we have had difficulty over the last two years filling positions, which has meant that we've had a substantial amount of our budget that has not been spent. That in turn came out to a lot of fund balance that was returned for the last two years. Um, this past year alone, we returned one point three million dollars. Um, so we don't project that obviously coming forward because we are filling positions now. So we don't see that we're gonna have that revenue. Additionally, we're losing some equalized education grant money and overall, the statewide property tax is going down, but Canterbury's is going up, Canterbury share. So the Department of Revenue calculates what they call equalized valuation and they look at, if they put the whole state on one hundred percent valuation, what would that amount to? And in Canterbury's situation, it's around six hundred million dollars is what the New Hampshire Department of Revenue calculated your equalized valuation. So that is used to calculate the state education grant that the town is assessed and that's going up sixty-three thousand dollars next year. So you've got the loss of adequate education, you've got the loss of the fund balance revenue that we had and you've got the increase in the statewide property tax. So that's all playing into the revenue piece, which offsets our proposed budget. When I do estimated tax rates, which is what our board likes to look at, I use what DRA used this year to set your tax rate and your assessed value is a little over three hundred million dollars. So that's the tax rate valuation that I had to use to project the tax rates. So the initial proposed budget that we're looking at in the district right now is actually translating to a thirty-five percent increase in the tax rate for Belmont. Now that has never actually resulted in the next year tax rate because your assessed values do change um, before you actually set the tax rate. But I anticipate that as we're going through the budget development and these rates are shared, there's going to be a lot of discussion in town about the huge tax, projected tax rate increase.
Did you say thirty-five percent?
Yes.
For Belmont?
For Canterbury.
Oh, I thought you said Belmont.
No, no, Belmont's is projected to go up ten percent based on what we have right now and Canterbury would go up thirty-five. And that's one of the other things that we've found over the years, um, they're not on the same reevaluation cycle. So we always end up, Canterbury goes up way high one year and then drops back down after you get reevaluated. Um, so that's another cyclical thing that we see often.
What's our equalization ratio right now?
Seventy-six.
We just did a revale.
We did a revale two years ago and it's already dropped down almost seventy-six percent.
But when you look at the equalized valuation that the state used last year, it's showing a fifty percent.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it's six hundred million dollar valuation?
Yeah.
That's double.
Yeah, double what I'm carrying. Right.
Yeah, you've got a three hundred and seventy thousand this year valuation.
You account for seventy-six, man, that's still.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, I talked to our assessor about doing a revale early. She said maybe, not, not this, in twenty-four, but maybe in twenty-five, which would be a year early that when we normally do it. So that's, that's where we are.
So those figures, is there an estimated, estimate of how much the increase would be?
So if, if all went stayed the same, if there was no change in your valuation um, and the budget that's proposed is actually adopted, um, in Canterbury, you'd be looking, if you had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you'd be looking at about a thousand and seven dollar increase a year.
There aren't any, there aren't very many two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes.
We have, not, not at a six hundred million dollar valuation, we can't have any of those.
Right. And I have different, different calculations, but, you know, a hundred thousand dollar home is about four hundred and three dollars a year.
Wasn't this going to affect what tax year?
That would be the tax rates that would go out next November if everything passed.
It wouldn't, it would not be, we wouldn't be able to absorb any of it in the June bill. It would all be due in the December bill.
Oh, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's if everything lasts.
That, well, that, right, that's if everything stays the same, which is right at that point.
Right. And right now, we're not projecting any fund balance either. It's early in the year and we've been able to fill most of the positions. So, you know, the last two years, we've had a substantial amount of money that we've been able to return, but it doesn't appear that we're gonna have that this year.
When the money is returned, does it actually go to the bottom, back to the, to the town? Or is it in a, in a fund balance that could be used?
So it becomes part of a formula, well, there's actually two things. So the school district is allowed by vote of the community to retain some of the fund balance. So we did retain 800,000 dollars this year and turned back the 1.3 million. So when we say turned back, that goes to the formula that says, okay, this is all of the revenue that can offset taxes, and then let's apportion the rest between the two communities. And that apportionment is based on partially ADM and partially your assessed valuation. So your apportionment actually, it's typically been around 23%, and it's a little over 24%. Your student enrollment went up compared to Belmont last year, and the assessed valuation goes up. So you've got about 24% of the budget that you're gonna be responsible for next year. But the 1.3 did get put against that total bottom line. So if we do have fund balance, that would go against that bottom line before it was apportioned out.
So again, we're not anticipating that large of a fund balance for us to work off of, particularly to, to potentially offset taxes, because we have been able to fill vacancies. And last year, we had quite a significant vacancy list that we weren't able to fill. However, the school board has made significant strides in increasing support staff wages, because most of those vacancies have been from support staff. And we've been able to fill those positions this year. Not all of them, but we still have a vacancy list, but not to the size that we had last year, which was enabled us to have that fund balance, which is not a situation we want to be in because those are vacancies that we, we need in the schools. We don't anticipate that coming out of this year. What does the 2024 school district budget starting to look like? I know you, your budget workshop is coming up, any major changes or... So what the board is working off right now are subtotal general fund, which is what taxes are based off of. What's, what's the, being proposed right now is a 7.36% increase. That's what they're working off of. The total budget is at 6.44%. So right now, that's what the board has on the table and that they're working through. We actually did present them with a default budget at our last meeting. That's coming in, the subtotal general fund's coming in at 5.93%. So there's about a 1.4% difference between the proposed operating budget and the default budget. So you keep in mind that over 80% of our, our operating budget is salaries and benefits. Our health insurance came in this year a little over 9%, which is actually is fairly good in comparison to some of our neighboring school districts. I also see that's, that's lower than what the town is seeing.
Town was up 15. Town was up 15.6%.
Would there be any benefit to trying to get both towns on the same revaluation schedule? Does that, would that help even things out?
It's been talked about in the past, and it, it's never been something, because there's two different counties involved. DRA has tried to keep it across the counties as well. So that's the other issue with trying to sync up your reevaluations.
Now, the town can revale anytime it wants.
Right.
There's no, there's no restrictions, it's just gets, gets an expense in and out.
Any, any other questions? Okay, well, we'll dive into our budget now. Just some highlights, you guys all have copies of all of this, so I'll start at the top. The wages, the CPI is up about 3.7%. We're discussing a wage increase of about 4% across the board. You have the 23 wages, including overtime, and percentages of, of what they are of the budget. So the wages are, are about 32% of the, of the operating budget. If you add the library in, it's about 36%. And with the proposed wage increases, again, it's, the numbers are the same. So that does not include the volunteer reimbursement or weekend coverage, however, for the fire department.
Is, is that being intentionally left out, or that needs to be added in?
That would need to be added in to figure the wages, but because, because those... I hate to include those because they, they really aren't wages, they're stipend. And, and we could add it, although I will say that our, our, our law firm, the attorney that represents us, has been talking with us about, we had some questions about, there's a difference between volunteer firefighters and on-call paid firefighters. And we are really an on-call paid fire department. The way they figure the volunteer reimbursement for the firefighters we have today, there's a formula that the fire chief uses based on how many calls they attend a year, or respond to, how many trainings they go to, and things like that. And, and that's how they base what they, they pay them every six months. It looks like we, we also provide per diem wages. If the full-time firefighter is out on vacation, sick, whatever, there are volunteer firefighters on our department that will step up and cover that shift. We pay them an hourly rate for that. When the racetrack or somebody hires the fire department for a standby, we have to pay them for that. So really, when it's all said and done, at the end of the day, we are a, a paid on-call fire department. And, and there is a distinction with the Department of Labor. So we're probably gonna make that move in 2024. So when the firefighter responds to a call, then they, they will track that out, those hours. And we're paying them as part of employees, we're not 1099-ing, they're, they all get W2s. So we're gonna probably make that, that shift official in 2024. And we'll be paying them probably quarterly based on the hours that they respond to calls and, and trainings and things like that, so.
The federal tax implication.
Yeah, the chief doesn't see any, any huge increases in the, in the, in our, at least the cost to our, to the town, the tax dollars. So, but yes, they will be payable taxes on that, you're correct.
Ken, if you don't mind, do you need Debbie and I for this budget?
I don't think so, if you guys are all set. Anybody have any questions for Mike and Debbie? Alright, great, thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Bring us better news next time.
I'd like to publicly thank John too for helping us out for those early morning calls, so appreciate that, John.
Moving on down, as I said earlier, our insurance is up 15.6%. The employee contribution is 20% of the plan. And we pay 5,000 dollars for non-participation. We are fortunate enough right now that we have, we only actually have three employees that are, that are, we have four employees that are not participating in the plan. So that's actually quite a cost savings at the time. We start working on the operating budget lines. The election wage is up 4,000 dollars, because we have four elections. Voting machine, we budgeted 3350 for it, that's for voting cards and testing and mains. Could not buy a new machine, we budgeted 7,000 dollars for new machine this year. We're encumbering it. We do, we are able to encumber it because we have an invoice, but we could not actually purchase it. So the state finally decided on a couple of different options, and Sam and Jim Miller went and looked at them, and they decided on one. So that 7,000 dollars we expended in, in 2024, but it's encumbered funds. Let's see. The town clerk would like a folder inserter, which is almost 6,000 dollars. He's been going up to, whenever we do tax bills, he's been going up to Samenton and borrowing theirs or using theirs.
Do you think that should be a warrant article and not in the budget?
It does not have to be, but we can, I mean, if you guys think it should be a warrant article.
It's just a thought, you look at it all of a sudden, what year is...
Yep, I know we've gone back and forth on this, whether we put it up. I know we put 7,000 in the budget last year for the voting machine, and should have been a warrant article, and we kind of went round and round, so. But yeah, we can, we can certainly make that a warrant article.
I mean, if it's easily explained that you don't like memorializing one-time or large purchases into a budget line, into an operating line, if you don't, if you don't have to, you also don't need a million small warrant articles.
Right.
Anything, I know. Or, you know, and, and, you know, it's also useful to not have any town meeting debates about how we count votes, so.
You'll notice the planning board secretary wages are down, because we're considering hiring a land use professional for 15 hours a week, that's one of the problems that we've incurred with the planning board. Lois Scribner is getting done at the planning board. And Lori, who was the planning board secretary before her, do a lot of, a lot of legwork with, with everything. And so we're thinking that, that hiring a part-time person would be probably the way to go. So again, it's one of those things we're talking about. Wanted to run it by you guys and see, see how you felt. I know it's an additional employee, but this is, this is the, Mandy is trying to handle as much of it as she can, but it just is, for whatever reason, the, the, that, that position is, is a very, very busy position.
Do you know, do you know, or can you describe on how many applications the planning board had over the actual subdivision and site plan?
I'm not sure how many are that, I, I think it's more that we, they have spent a ton of time on this Plan for Tomorrow and all the work they've done on the changes to the zoning ordinance. But I don't know how many we...
So it's, oh, so it's more than just...
Yeah. I think this will be part of that, right, Ken?
That project's over, right? I mean, the master plan is theoretically...
Well, that, that's gonna end, that, that's gonna end, that's...
The planning board's responsibility to update the development, the zoning is ongoing.
Right.
My question on it would be, how much of this is because the planning board has made things so complicated? And, because it would be useful to know if the workload, and I don't think any way from the effort Lois has put in, I just, you know, have wondered if there are, have been one or two specific projects that have really tied us in knots, that are making the situation, you know, an anomaly in this past year that may or may not be there going forward.
Well, I think part of it is, of course, Lois leaving. We did bring somebody new on to take additional notes, but it's just, it's just overwhelming them right now. And I, you're, you're right, it'll probably be down next year, but I don't know how many were, I didn't count them out.
Do you know if there's not justifying 16,000 or whatever?
What is the job description exactly, like a permanent secretary? Are they enforcement, are they, like, do they do the research, what, what...
Well, they would, they would handle, and we've been talking about this between Mandy, Lois, and Joel, the code enforcement, because he's been going out on a lot of these code enforcement calls. We had three more today that, that came in from, um, the, the three properties that, that have short-term rentals that never went and got special exceptions. So a lot of that is coming up. And I guess, you know, it just, it just seems like the workload has increased to a point where Joel's working two days a week now, and that's really all he can work. Unless we want to do something with a building inspector, code enforcement officer, so I, I don't know.
So would this be, include code as well?
Code as well, correct, yeah.
So would you be hiring a land planner, someone that is, you know, like a professional staff?
That's, that's what we're hoping for, hopefully a retired person that has some kind of planning experience, which would be our, our goal. That could work with the planning board.
Yeah, those people do a lot of work. It's one of the gaps we have, is that there is no, there never has been a professional land planner in your town.
And if you, if you look in other towns, most of the towns now have some kind of planning professional that they employ.
So this person would be more than just secretarial?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. Yep, yep.
So they have enforcement tower then?
Well, that would, depending on what their job description is, if they're, if they are code enforcement or whatever, they would work with Joel, I, I don't know.
The enforcement, enforcement lives only with the select.
With the select.
Well, that's what I mean, I'm just curious though. If you had a land planner on staff, it would be, the land planning staff would be the people who ensured conformity to improve site plan rather than, rather than the code enforcement officer. They wouldn't go do code enforcement for somebody who had a yard full of junk or was, you know, running a welding shop, you know, they wouldn't do that probably. But they would check a potential site plan for condos or... They, they would, they would, they would, they would be the people that would monitor the compliance with the, with the site plan and the various conditions for the site planning and the zoning to be, and that's part of the site plan. Joel would still be the guy that would have to go deal with it. That's what I was curious about, Joel aspect of this person.
But I think you need to have a job description noodle down.
Yes.
So that everybody understands because
Yep.
that is a very highfalutin title. And, you know, what, what is a land use professional? We, we need a job description to support...
We will, we will certainly come up with a job description before we move forward on this, yeah. Yep.
I won't apply.
Yep. Moving on down, the fire department, the full-time firefighter that we have has, has made it known that he's looking at retirement, so, early in the, the new year, and the fire chief is looking at filling the shifts with per diem. He has a personnel that could work 26 hours a week, and then has, could fill the other two shifts with, with other volunteers, so.
That seems like a good idea.
Yeah, you know, there would certainly be a cost savings in the area of between 25 and 30,000 dollars a year, so. And Petticoat Rescue, we don't have a price from them, but I did get an email saying they're looking at potentially 8% which would bump their cost per year up to about 165,000 dollars. The highway department, you can see equipment repairs are up. I think everybody is, knows about all the breakdowns that we've had this year. Motor, backhoe, grader.
It'd be a shorter list if you told us what was still working.
The, the two-year-old F-550 had a motor replacement, which was on warranty, but it was still on service for quite a while. You know, anyway. Paving, the estimates for the paving are Mountview, Ayers. Mountview was the overlay, Ayers Road reclaim an overlay. Moral, which is just a portion of Moral Road, not the whole thing. Reclaim an overlay. And then we also got a request for the library for an overlay. And Borough Road, a grade shim, and a swale. and, uh, Borough Road, a gradey shim, and a swale, and then the center sidewalk. So with the encumbered money and the proposed budget, uh, we could cover all that.
Central sidewalk is from the intersection to the school?
Not the sidewalk.
Not the sidewalk?
No.
Oh.
Just li- library off that center.
I thought, oh, okay, I thought it was, what was the sidewalk, what was the sidewalk in your paperwork?
The sidewalk, I did have a bid for that, but I didn't have enough money to be able to do that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you, John, for that clarification, so not the sidewalk. Um, we still have some ARPA money that, uh, we're trying to figure out what to spend it on, we had originally intended that for broadband expansion. It looks like we have a commitment from Comcast to fully expand, cover the whole town. Um, on their dime, so to speak, they have applied for some grants and hopefully they'll get some, but they have made it more or less clear that they will do the work and they are, actually have been streaming some cable, so, um.
Can we give it to the school?
Pardon me?
Can we give it to the school?
Give it to the school? Well, the question came up about, uh, our dirt roads, and we haven't substantially added any material to any of the dirt roads in quite a few years. Uh, we've maintained them, but we've never really added any material to them, and as you know, when you grate them and then they do the, the ditching, you lose material, every year it's a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, it adds up. So the question is to use some of that money for the dirt road and add some material and, and, uh, most likely we'd be hiring a, a subcontractor to come in and actually do the work, because we don't have the trucks or the ability, the time, whatever, to, to spend that money. That money has to be committed by two thousand twenty-five and it has to be spent by two thousand twenty-six, so. That was one of the thoughts on, on using.
That's a great thought.
It's a great, it's a great thought if it actually saves some money off the operating budget going forward, I mean, because you'd love to be able to leverage that into something, if we don't need it for broadband, that's a big win.
Yeah.
You might think about keeping some of it back for broadband type project, it has, it has to be an infrastructure project, right? It's, because it's restricted.
We cannot pay off any existing bonds, we can't invest it, we can't, um, let's see, there's a few, there are some restrictions on it, but, um, there, other than that, it's, we could use it to pay our heating bills if we wanted to. Uh, those types of things, utility bills, um, we could, we could use it to pay the paving costs this year. Instead of the taking two hundred thirty thousand dollars, we could use some of that to pay paving. So there are, there are operating lines we can use it in, but there are also some restrictions on it too.
Given that there's gonna be a, sounds like a nasty fall spike in the tax rate, you might want to hang on to some of it to see if you can offset the amount to be raised by taxation in the current year and invest some in.
Yeah, and I have to look to see what the restrictions are on that, I'm not sure, um, I do know that with the reporting of it, any grant that you have requires, as everybody knows, reporting and multiple, I guess, multiple uses of the money require more reporting, so I was kind of trying to
Use it when you use it.
Help myself out a little bit with reporting, did not only have to report one project instead of six small ones. Uh, but, you know, whatever, I, that's, that's just one of those things that we have to reference, so.
Well, how much dirt road do you get fixed for a quarter million dollars?
Well, John?
I don't know, uh, I kind of figured it would be three million, just to top them with six inches.
We have thirty, we have thirty, thirty miles of dirt roads above it.
Thirty miles, there are twenty paved.
So that's, you know, and, and again, none of them have had any materials, any substantial material added to them. If you drive down on any of the dirt roads, you can see where the level of them has decreased. You know, you look at, certainly there's grade changes with the, with the old stone walls and everything, but if you drive down any of them, there's still, you can, you can see it averages around a foot or so below.
There's not a lot of ditch.
No, and in places, I know, on Foster Road, there's places where they're scraping, uh, granite, you know, and it's just, there's nothing there. So, they add what they can, um, but that's, that's all they can do.
So wouldn't that make sense, I mean, since they're only gonna get worse if we can find a way to ameliorate it at least to some extent?
Yeah, and, and again, I, you know, long-term implications of it, if we don't, I, you know, we, we're gonna have to add material and we could keep doing the same thing as we're doing now, spot, spot, spot. Um, and, and certainly maintain them to the, hopefully the level we have, but, but again, um, the, the harder, the harder the material under the road, the harder the grader works and it, the harder you work the equipment, the, least, less time it lasts, so.
We also had, uh, like five storms that were two inches plus this year.
Yeah, right.
Went right through the gravel budget like was in there.
If I may, just to reiterate, um, I have four hundred dollars left from my ARPA grant and it's so restrictive, I cannot figure out, so, can due diligence, you're right, Ken, it's hard to figure out with, because it's fed, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's very hard.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, at the end of the day, we don't want to give it back to the federal government.
No.
And if.
No, and, and I, certainly, there are, there are operating costs we can look at, yes, absolutely.
I'm, I'm sensitive to not complicating it, if our business manager was still here, she would remember when we got the grant money to do the energy upgrades on the schools and the reporting was part of it, it was just, I never signed my name so many times.
Um, this would probably be complicating things, but is, would there be any advantage to, say, adding more solar on, on the, up at the police and fire department to offset future electrical demand in town?
I, I, I will say that I, I'm certainly no expert by any means, but when I first started, I looked at the solar and our, uh, utility costs up there and Bob Drew and, um, Howard came in and the person, uh, Nutella and explained how it's all billed, and because because we are as billed as a commercial, uh, building up there, the peak demand charges, uh, are applicable and and certainly, would there be a cost savings, yes, there would, but, um, I, I couldn't tell you what those cost savings would be in reference relatively to what our costs would be to, to add more panels. Um, it's, it's one of those, it's, it's complicated and, but the way this was explained to me was, because of the peak demand charges, we, our solar up there does some, but it's not, not gonna, at a day like this morning where the panels are covered with snow and they come in and they turn on the, the, all the lights in the building and then plow breaks, they fire up the welder, and then the compressor kicks in and all these things, so we're not making any power, but we're using lowest power, um, and that's what we're billed at, at, at a certain rate, so. Again, there would certainly be a cost savings, but I, I don't know what, what that would be relative to the cost of, of installing more panels. Let's see. Transfer station, uh, wages are up twenty thousand, uh, that's because we have full staff finally and, um, we're adding more hours per week, so uh, we actually have twenty hours per week up there now and, uh, full staff, so that's, that's what that is. Um, the co-op fees are going up another five dollars, from eighty-five to ninety dollars a ton. Um, you can see where we average forty-five tons a month and, but we get about twelve thousand dollars back from shaver, those, that's counted in that, that, uh, total budget. Um, we put the direct.
What is shaver?
Yep.
What's a shaver?
Shaver is another, is a private hauler, but they, 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 pardon me?
So it's twelve hundred, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's twelve, I'm sorry, it's not twelve hundred, it's twelve thousand, that was a typo on mine. They're a private hauler, and they, what they do is they haul trash from Canterbury over to the, uh, uh, wheel elevator and they get billed by the ton and we bill them, so, it, it, that's how that works.
Okay.
We, we have to pay the, we have to pay the total amount of tonnage to wheel elevator and then we turn around and bill shaver for what they, what they mark.
They tip on our account.
Yes, yeah, they ship on our account, yeah.
I have a question about transfer station.
Yep.
Um, I know we added hours a few months ago, uh, is there any data on is that serving the town or are people happy with that, is, I mean, I personally never seem to encounter a wait at the transfer station, so, um.
We have had quite a bit of positive feedback from it, um, from people just coming in and talking and from the staff at the transfer station. Uh, we, we have to be open on Tuesday for a certain amount of time. Well, the transfer station doesn't have to be open, but we have to have personnel there to bail the cardboard and the paper. So we figured that would be the best time to add a few hours on at the end of the day. They come in at noon time, they bail everything, and then they open at three o'clock and they open until six point five, so.
I think it's great to have that extra day.
I do too.
It really is.
I, again, we've had positive feedback on it, so it's, it's one of those things.
And the staff is great, they really are.
Yeah, we, we're very fortunate to have, uh, a young man that, that came on more up there and he's actually, uh, interested in going to work for the highway department and maybe splitting the those shifts, twenty, twenty hours at the transfer station, twenty hours at the highway department, someone told me, a couple of years ago, so. Uh, direct assistance is up four thousand, we over-expended our line quite a bit, we had a couple of cases this year that really, uh, cost the town some money, and just one of those things that we are responsible for, so. Uh, the library is here and would you like to speak to your budget now?
Sure, sure, Ken, um, so. I know, it's nice of you, so if you go to our page, um, it doesn't have a number, it's almost at the end, four five five zero dot three zero. You can see in our increases, um, the trustees, sorry, this is Ron Luke here, my trustees, um. You can see a thousand dollar increase in contracts. Um, that is just, is simply because digital, um, material is on the increase. Uh, just a three hundred dollar increase on technology labor, so trust fund expenses that the trustees have also offered nine thousand dollars to offset, uh, wages again this year, as Ken pointed out in the blur, um, wages of eleven thousand dollar increase, increase, uh, that's increased because we have six additional service hours added. Um, one thousand dollars for maintenance, um, two hundred dollars for dues, you can see kind of chunk change until we get to the insurance. Um, that's a, that's a big increase for every department, but also for the two of us that are contributing forty percent uh, and retirement, so we come in at twenty-five six ninety-seven this year.
Under wages threshold, so is that, um, a four percent increase for everybody plus six extra hours of operation?
It is not, it does not cover a four percent increase, no, it's more hours that we're actually already working. I just need a staff to cover the times that we're.
What are the extra hours that you're putting in? Oh, they're not open to public, they're just.
No, they're regular open hours plus, uh, I, I comp my hours, so I have a hundred ninety-five hours banked that I haven't been able to pay myself for work. So I need more hours.
But over the last two years, that's a twenty-one point five percent increase on the wages, that's a lot. Last year was thirteen and a half, and this year it's eight.
It's eleven thousand dollars though this year.
Quite a percentage, right?
Well, yeah, but an eight percent in another department might be more than eleven thousand dollars. Am I following you? If it's eleven thousand dollar increase, yes, it is an eight percent, but also I mean, to keep in mind fifteen point six, and I understand these are all questions because you can't deny nor prove the budget, but fifteen point six percent for health insurance.
Oh, I understand, but so are you giving yourself a wage increase?
Uh, I'm giving Cheryl a raise, a dollar raise.
But are they also staying the same?
Everyone is going fifty cents up. And I can't do that every year.
No.
It's not gonna be long, I'm gonna be, I'm just saying, withholding that.
Thank you.
The, the challenge in the staffing decisions, right, are when you memorialize, you, when you bring on extra staff and you bring them in at a full-time level, so they send them on retirement and healthcare, that's, that's where the big jump occurred two years ago or three, I think.
I, I was added to retirement two years ago and Cheryl was added last year.
So that, obviously, those, those are the
That was the end.
personnel choices that drive then the legacy costs, because then it just, then it stays up, um, on the healthcare front.
Correct.
I know when we were, Ken, you mentioned it before, but maybe it's a relevant time to look at it now, I, I, I pulled two hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred dollars in the budget for healthcare costs for the coming year. I just did this exercise, uh, with a small company in another state that, I'm bored of, and, um, at, there's a point in time when if you don't trip the threshold for a number of employees for, you know, Affordable Care Act, that it makes sense to look at getting a high deductible plan and with an HSA where the town funds the HSA. It, it's, it, we, we, we did a, we did a calculus of the traditional plan, you know, family plan, spouse plan, individual plan, and then they did, okay, what if everybody had a seven thousand dollar deductible plan? And the company funded in, you know, an HSA with, I think they funded it, I, I think they fully funded it, and then it carries over. And you use that, they funded it once, but not everybody uses it. And then you can use your HSA funds, you know, it becomes the employee's money, it stays with them forever. But the drop in the premium cost was substantial. I mean, it's not the kind of exercise you can probably do between now and when this budget has to get put together, but I think it would be a worthwhile project maybe to look at next year.
My school district just did that.
Yeah.
And the, the cost per employee's, the difference is substantial.
Yeah.
I was probably paying five, over almost, almost six hundred a month, that was only to a person, and now I'm paying a hundred thirty dollars.
Yeah, so it's, when, yeah, so when the employees, the, the town and the employee, when they're covering, you know, part of the premium cost, can, can really make it up. It may have an impact in the first year, depending on how your policy is to fund it, I would just go find other people's policies and see what they look like. Uh, and how to do it, but I think that's an exercise worth looking at.
Okay.
Because if you work in everybody's favor, you know.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate that because
That's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, you can see our offset, that's just two of us, you know, that's sixteen four ninety-three, that's just Cheryl and my contribution, so. That's a lot.
All right, I'm in the private market.
I know.
And we focus on the, the wage line for the library and it seems like eight percent is a lot, but I mean, that wage line is paying for five people, and if you take that one forty-nine divided by five, most of us make more than that. That's, I mean, that's still eight percent, I know it sounds like a lot that they're, that we're doing there, but it's really not. I know it sounds like a lot that they're, that we're doing there, but it's really not.
So you have to use up two full timers, right?
Correct.
And then three part time?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I think the conversation that we've had the last few years on the library budget for the trustees is to just watch, watch your run rate, you know? Cause it, it's, every year it can't be ten percent top on the budget, you know, cause it compounds pretty fast.
But the percent is deceiving, cause eight percent of our budget is a lot less than eight percent of somebody else's budget.
Actually, the percent is what equalizes, is it, across all departments. It'd be one thing if it was a really small department and, you know, eight percent was eight dollars, but the, the reason we look at it in percentage basis across all the departments is to actually account for that size. The dollar difference and I, you know, I'm not objecting to what you proposed with adding hours and delivering service is great. Let's just keep an eye on, you know, year in and year out, the entire budget can't run at a ten percent increase.
It's not, okay.
You know, and, and that means everybody's component can't run at a ten percent increase.
Yeah, so with this, this operating budget, um, let's see, there's, there. Um, we're looking at a, about three point one percent increase on the total operating line. So, um. Now, now we'll get into the warrant articles.
Well, and you, you got a benefit this year though, right? Because the municipal bond is retired, so that should put a hundred and twenty thousand.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Twenty thousand bucks back.
And that, that, that was part of that, that's why it went up three point one percent. Because we, we're not paying on that municipal, uh, the center building project, uh, buildings anymore, so. Um, warrant articles, we're gonna have one for a backhoe. The backhoe we have is not repairable, sitting out behind the highway garage. And it, it, it doesn't run, I guess it does run, but not very well, very well, not usable anyway. It's, you can see the cost is a little under two hundred thousand. Uh, we signed non-binding lease with Caterpillar for a new one. We have a down payment of forty-one thousand, which is, uh, the capital reserve, part of the capital reserve. And then we paid thirty-two thousand dollars for five year lease, for five years, so. Um, again, it's a non-binding lease, but in order to order, order the machine and have it available, we, we had to assign some paperwork, so that's what we did. If the warrant article does not pass town meeting, we are under no obligation to pay Caterpillar any money. Uh, the grader, uh, it was down for quite a bit of the time uh, with a part that according to, uh, the dealer was unavailable through Volvo International. Um, the guys called Volvo Canada, uh, they called Scrap Yards looking for one where they could try and find a part for it. In order to make it run, they had no luck. Um, thank, thanks to Evan Hartman who decided to call a different mechanic to come look at it. Who knew had some experience with these. They came and looked at it, they found a different part that was available. So we were able to get it back on, on track. However, it's twenty plus years old and it's, again, one part from being parked out next to the backhoe. So, uh, we talked with Caterpillar again and, and Volvo is no longer making graders. So their, their support for the one we have isn't very well. We talked to Caterpillar, we got a price of four hundred and forty thousand dollars. We have three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, almost three hundred and eighty in the cap reserve. Uh, plus there'll be another thirty thousand, uh, hopefully in, it's deposited in twenty-four. And then a trade-in and that should pretty much pay for a new grader.
It's nice when that works.
That, that grader, that thing's been on.
Thank you for, thank you for contributing all the money to the cap reserve during these last years because if we hadn't been, then we'd be looking at spending a lot, awful lot of tax dollars this year. The siding on this building, the lower clapboards are starting to lose their paint. And, um, we looked at it and it's from backsplash in the water. So we looked at putting gutters on here and it's about four thousand dollars to put gutters on it on this building, so. So we're looking at a warrant, yeah, I know, huh? I know, huh? I was like, I'm going home, you go buy some gutters and I'll charge them that. Yeah, no kidding. Uh, but that was, that was a cost we got from three different gutter companies and right in that range, they're all the same range, so. We do have somebody else that we may get another, another, uh, um, price on. So he's a fellow that done some, did some work at the library and up at the museum building. Um, he's a local guy that, that does a lot of different things. And, um, and so we're, I've talked to him and he's gonna come look at it and give us an idea, so.
This building was finished in two thousand and five.
Yep.
Yeah.
How much would it cost to put a couple rows of clipboard on the bottom?
It costs a clipboard, pretty close to four thousand bucks.
Yeah, they're hard, hard, hardy boards, right?
Yeah, some of them have seen it, probably nine dollars or a penny a foot.
Yeah. Yep. The historical society, uh, would like to replace the mini split in the, uh, room, in their room on the library. That hasn't, the one that's there hasn't operated in several years. Uh, they got some estimates and they're looking at around eight thousand dollars for that. And they also, uh, cemetery trustees are looking at, uh, trying to do quite a, quite a substantial job up at Maple Grove. And it's gonna run around thirty-three thousand dollars. They're running out of space up there, so they need to clear some trees and stump and grade and get ready for more, more plots up there. So they have a couple of, uh, a couple estimates and it's in the area of around thirty-three thousand dollars.
Just for tree removal?
Pardon me?
For tree removal?
That's tree removal, grading, stumping and grading.
How big are the extent?
A lot, a lot, um. Ken, what is it, about, less than, less than half an acre, right?
No, I think it's more than that. We're, we're going, so the cemetery actually owns, the town owns, from the side that you see now where you park up there, down over the edge and comes out on Baptist Hill Road. And once we get out there, probably a hundred and fifty feet or so, it drops and becomes wetland, so we can't cross onto that. We had thought originally of bringing in another road so we could develop a little more of that, but, uh, we've decided just to, just to clear the trees out, clear the edge of that top of the swamp and we should get about four hundred lots in there when we're done, which is.
How close are you to running out of, out of land now?
Very close.
I mean, out of, out of lots.
Of lots, so we have probably, I don't know, fifteen in the lower part. And then we have a valley that we're trying to develop as a cremains lot, so we're, um, we, we don't have to do anything, we just have to lay it out some more and we can get a lot of cremains in there. Been there since nineteen oh eight, I believe. Lot of the lots up on top unfortunately were sold as twenty-one by twenty-ones, which means if they're using half the land up there, that's doing good, but you, you can't go back and kick people out, of course, so.
Do you have like eighty fifteen available right now?
I would say that's somewhere near, Sam went out and did a tally the other day and I, I think that's what he came up with. It didn't include the cremains lots and that's the other thing we have done in the past is sell the full lots, which are eight by, or four by ten. And we'll bury one or two cremains in those, so if we can develop this upper area, we should be able to get a lot of life extension on that portion of the cemetery. The other thing they did, when they did, they did twenty-one by twenty-one when I was a kid. And, uh, they would sell you a lot for ten bucks, you know, twenty-one by twenty-one. And then between every lot up there, they had a walkway, which we don't do any of that now, right? But you can't really reconfigure the lots at this point, so. We're dealing with what we've got there.
How many is room for me?
I think you've got a lot up there, Bob, sorry.
I do have a lot.
Right, across from me?
Thirty-three thousand bucks.
I, I understand there's no way to, um, kick anybody out of the old lots, but it sounds to me like you're saying like twenty by twenties are only being partially used?
Yeah.
Could, could people be invited to subdivide and sell off some available space?
More work for the planning board.
Yeah. We're a professional.
I mean, if it's, if it's a family that lived here a hundred years ago and they, you put one or two bodies in twenty by twenty space.
And Sam's been diligent about digging those up.
Uh, you might wanna use a different term.
Maybe goes as adding life to the cemetery.
Yeah, terrible.
So, uh, we came up with, I don't know, fifteen maybe up on one top, so.
Not a big game.
It's hard to tell who's where, you know, I did ask Huey before we left, but he had no idea what to do, so.
That would be embarrassing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We crowed.
Bad idea, sorry.
We, and we do, do still have the parking area. We were just trying to hold that to the bitter end because one thing, we don't know what's in here. It was fill, we don't know what kind of fills in there, so it could be most anything. But that, at some point, we'll probably start using that as well.
Additional warrant articles, um, uh, historic district has proposed some zoning changes. The current zoning gives in our ordinances, gives the meets and bounds. And they would like to change that to, uh, to coincide with, actually describe the, use the overlay and the tax map, so. Which makes sense.
Didn't they do that last year?
Pardon me?
They did that last year?
No, no, they, they, they were talking about last year and they never, never changed it.
Oh, I thought they did.
They increased the, increased the area.
Right.
But they did not change the, the zoning to, uh, to do that.
And Harry Kinter also came in under that.
Right, they don't use that into that last year, remember that?
Yep, and then, then they're, um, going to, uh, uh, let's see, uh, they would permit a waiver. So if, if, if you're in the historic district and you, I guess, had something that you fill out an application and if the chair of the HTC and a member of the, I believe it's the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Um, looked at the application and felt there was no impact to the HTC historic district, historic district area. That, that you wouldn't have to go through the process of, uh, of attending a meeting and getting a butters in and all that, so.
Could you, like, an example?
Yeah, so, so the way the, the way the, uh, rules are now is, involves, uh, natural features such as a tree. So if you had a tree out in your yard you wanted to cut down, and you were in the historic district, right now, if you followed the rule to the letter, you would have to apply for the HTC. And you'd have to have a meeting and pay your butters fees and notification fees and all that, just to cut a tree down. So if, if this was the case, then you fill out an application and, and the chair of the HTC and a member of the Board of Selectmen would, would review it. See what the, what, what you wanted to do and then decide whether you actually had to go to a meeting or not.
Shouldn't it be a form of three people?
Um, yeah, I think you could change it to, to three, right now.
You'd have to have a form, I'm trying to think, right?
They're gonna be coming in anyways to talk to the selectmen at some point, so we can suggest that.
Yeah, right now it just says, it just says the, the chair and then the, uh, select board representative, so, um, to, to look at the application, so. And then part of, uh, part of the rules that they have, or part of the, I guess, the operating rules they have, uh, su- suggest, had some languages, a shall, and they're changing it to may. Where, where the select board shall, uh, consider someone's background, uh, professional background in appointing them. And now it's, we're gonna change it to may, so, two things, few of those, those things.
Well, I think it would be a good idea to have three people, because if only you got two and one says yes and one says no, what do you do?
Sure, yeah, yeah, makes sense to me, yeah.
I think they're also gonna be back next year for more rule changes, so we'll see this one again.
And then obviously the planning board has quite a few, uh, proposals they're gonna come forward with, uh, relative to the, um, subzoning changes, table uses and things, I haven't seen everything. And there also is going to be one, because there were some federal changes in the floodplain rules, there will probably be a zoning amendment for that too. Because we have federal, there's federal flood, flood insurance that people are available, having people have available for them. And so that will require a zoning change too.
And that's voted, right?
That's correct, yeah, that's a, first session. Any of these zoning changes are at the first session, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then depending on what happens with the school withdrawal, let's see what happens with that.
I actually did get information about that, Randy did speak to the Department of Education tonight and they are on the agenda for the fourteenth.
Oh, wow, well, good.
Sorry, I just got that information as you all were talking, so.
Thank you very much.
Cool. Um, obviously you guys have some hard calls to make, right? Knowing what we now know is gonna spike actually at, at fall, which is like the last thing you'll ever wanna do is have a huge fall spike. So some hard choices on the need to have versus nice to have front in some of these projects and can they be phased? Can they be delayed, um, I think you gotta look at, um, you have to look at this budget in, in the light of what we know is about to happen to us on the school district side of things. To that end, have you crafted recommendations yet for the capital reserve contributions?
We, we haven't done any, made any changes yet.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, where is, what's, where's the unreserved fund balance?
Um, we're sitting at, uh, well, after, after the pain of the school and the county today, we're, we're probably a little less than a million bucks, we're sitting at about one point.
Oh, the manifest.
Oh, do you have it?
The manifest would have it on there.
All right. Uh, we're, well, as of today, we're at six eighty-eight, seven sixty-eight, six hundred eighty-eight thousand.
That's the cash balance, I mean the unreserved.
Unreserved, we've been, we've been right around one point two million, yeah.
And, and two hundred and fifty of that is encumbered, that's the, that's the arper money.
Arper money, right.
And you don't want it to dip too low, but you have, you know, when you have, that, that sort of spike is the place to try to use some of it. You just, you can't eliminate that kind of.
Yeah, that's too big a spike to.
You can't, you can't go back to your days when we were out of cash every, other than taking tax anticipation notes and there are no.
No.
No, it's just, but it's a tough layer, I hear.
Absolutely.
That makes brilliant insight. Um, when, is the fire truck, is there a fire truck forthcoming? Did you guys actually order it?
The fire truck, yes, has been ordered.
Awesome.
Uh, do you remember ten, twenty-six months, sound right?
Yes.
So twenty twenty-six? Uh, let's see. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, January of twenty-six, yeah, first of the year of twenty-six.
Assuming the schedule holds, yes.
We didn't, we didn't get the, um, the grant, did we?
Unless Ken, you have information on that.
We have, we did, we got the grant for the radios, um.
Which was fifty, fifty-ish thousand.
Yeah, we did get the grant for that.
Yeah.
Um, but, the official word has not come down, but the unofficial word has.
We are not going to get it.
Not ready?
I think you can plan on it, so, let me down, now we need to look at, because that's a, okay, keeping engine three glued together for a couple more years is step one, and then step two, that should, that impacts the replacement time, because now the Ferrari is gonna be getting older, how long will you run that?
Twenty, fifteen, sixteen?
Fifteen delivery, I think.
Yeah, I think that's right.
It, it might be a fourteen model delivered in fifteen.
So if you go by NFPA recommendations, we should be looking at twenty thirty-ish. Yeah, I, I'd like to see it go longer than that.
Yeah, we, we are, we traditionally have, because it's not like our, our activity isn't.
Correct, and that works in our favor.
That's not a lot of time to rebuild that capital.
Right, but, we got twenty, well, by the time we get the new engine delivered, before the thirty-year mark, for the, for the old engine, the current engine, so that's, that's all be good.
Yeah.
I'd love to see us do close to that well with the Ferrari, I'm not sure we will, but, do everything we can to do that.
How old was the E-one when it finally retired? It was over thirty, wasn't it?
Hmm, I think it was just thirty years old.
Yeah.
It was just thirty.
That's asking a bit much.
It is, yeah.
But if you can.
Yeah, given the quality of the equipment today.
Yeah, I mean.
Unfortunately.
If we can get twenty years of the Ferrari, that would be a lot, yeah.
Agreed, yeah.
Which would at least put us to.
Twenty thirty-five?
Yeah, thirty-four, thirty-five, but still. Wow, they would a million and a half at that point, from, oh, yeah, they're.
Well. You might be closer than we.
Apparently, the town's properties would be worth a billion dollars, I bet. Okay. Shites.
Calvin, you might actually be pretty darn close.
Is this under what, just under nine?
No, eight, eight, just over eight, if I remember.
And that was, well, it's kind of more than the engine we bought seven years ago, or. We paid, the contract price for the Ferrari was just over three fifty, and then by the time we actually kitted it out with some options, it came in like three seventy-eight.
Three, yeah, yeah.
It was only three eighty.
Yeah.
One hundred three hundred eighty thousand.
Should be safe to say one point two to one point five, so.
Yep, I think it would, yeah, yeah, scary numbers.
Making the deal on that Ferrari would better be killing him.
Yeah.
Where's the buried treasure? Anything else, what, what else do you need from us, if this state's changing?
Just, uh, Bob, just a quick update, uh, before we set the tax rate, this last, just, just a while ago, our assigned fund balance from the MS four thirty-four was one point seven million. So, we're actually looking pretty good in that, that.
Yeah, so, one point seven, so, one three fif, you know, okay, that, that, that lines up with what I thought it ought to be, in the one point three range.
Yep.
And so you can, you'll be able to ease some.
Yep.
Of the school district's fight.
Yep. We didn't use any, we didn't use any, uh, of the fund to lower the tax rate this year. It only went up twenty cents per thousand, so we just, we didn't see any, any sense in doing that. Um, the only other thing I'll bring up is the police department, um, has. In this year's budget, the police have under-expended, uh, so far this year, um, their budget was five hundred and five thousand, they've only spent three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, because they've been understaffed pretty much the whole year. They can't hire anybody. And, and obviously, they're in the same boat as, as a lot of towns and cities around here. Um, one thing that a lot of the communities around here have been doing is, uh, hiring incentives, whether you do it either sign-on bonus or some other kind of incentive, and what, what a lot of the towns are doing now is assigning cruisers, take-home cruisers for each individual officer, with a thirty-mile, you know, you have to live in thirty miles or something like that. So, the chief was, uh, asking if, with the money that they have left over this year, could he buy a cruiser for around thirty-five or forty thousand dollars and offer that as a, as a hiring incentive that, that they have take-home cruisers? It's, you know, they have the money in the budget this year, it's not something that, you know, we typically do, we do it for the department heads, but not the individuals. But again, that's what the other towns are offering, so if we wanna hire somebody, I don't know what else we can do.
I like the idea of a sign-on bonus much better, because it's not, it doesn't carry over.
Yep.
You can take your, you, you can offer a generous, you can offer a generous sign-on bonus if you're this far under budget.
Right.
At this point in time, but you can't, but it's a one-time expense.
Well, the unintended consequences of the police officers, the enforcement, say, oh, he's got a car, what about me, where's my car?
Well, it would be, it would, this would be, everybody would get a car.
Everybody would get a car.
Everybody would get a car, I mean, we have, we have, we have four, four police officers plus the chief, so that'd be five cars.
How desperately do they, do they need the extra officer? I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to gut it, but how much do they use them, can they get away with not having one without having to incentivize it?
Again, it's, uh, you know, uh, when you have somebody on vacation and then somebody's out sick, you call in state police to cover. Uh, they cover, state police now covers, uh, from eleven o'clock till seven o'clock in the morning, most nights. Um, when they had full staffing on Fridays and Saturdays, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, they were covering Canterbury officer till one o'clock in the morning. Now they're, now they're going home at ten or eleven o'clock at night.
What about sheriff's department? Can you contract them for more coverage? Would that be cheaper than another employee?
Again, it's, you know, is there a sheriff's department officer available when the call, when the emergency call comes in? And that's, that's, you know, it's, it's the same as, as any other coverage like that for emergency services.
We did the analytics on that, hmm, before, before Mike came on board, we did the analytics on it, and, uh, you could contract for a dedicated resource, in other words, that would occupy our salary for patrol in our town, and it was more expensive than hiring local officers, but you could hire officers. So, but I, I can't imagine that the sheriff's department is in any better shape personnel-wise than the state police or the town department.
Nobody is.
Yeah, the state police right now, uh, seventy to eighty openings.
Yeah.
So, you know, and we will sometimes wait long periods of time.
That's the challenge with relying on the state police to cover us, is typically, I mean, at some, at some point in time, was it last year, I mean, there was one trooper on between Concord and the Canadian border.
Yep.
Overnight, I mean, it was nobody. Uh, so, but I still don't like the idea of a company car. I mean, if I do that, then I think you should buy a couple of old toilet carolers.
But what about, what about having an incentive, uh, a retention bonus for those who stay, and a signing bonus for somebody come on?
So we did retention bonuses a few years ago, um, and certainly it was appreciated. Um, one of the things the chief mentioned as far as a sign-on bonus is that that sign-on bonus goes to the new employee, and what does the, the current employee get? And I said, well, that's the thing, we'd have to do a sign-on bonus and some kind of retention bonus for the people that we have. Uh, it would, it couldn't be just a sign-on bonus for the person that we're hiring, because that kinda sends the wrong message to the people that are already here.
Says leave and get a bonus somewhere else.
Right.
Well, the other, the other reality.
And with the hiring situation that we have is, uh, Concord Hospital's paying thirty dollars an hour for a security officer there, which requires no certification laws. Um, so, that's what we're up against by hiring.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the other reality is we're competing with other towns for these young people, and if they're offering a vehicle, plus a bonus, plus an, you know, it's a competition. And honestly, the state police are losing. So, you know, if we wanna get an officer, I think we have to have some parity with what the other towns are offering.
I think the vehicles would get better maintenance too if they brought it home.
How many cruisers do we have now?
We have four.
And so we would need five.
We need to buy one more, yeah.
But then we have five, we got five in rotations, so theoretically, it would extend the life of the fleet.
Right, yeah.
And then you wouldn't be slipseating, you wouldn't be slipseating the cops, sorry, you drop us, or we could charge you a lot, yeah. I mean, it, it could work, it's, it could work. Well, one of the things I did back at Quinn River was I bought, you know, like, my branch managers and everybody had like little ranger pickup trucks, and we, the company bought the trucks, and then we told every manager to assign a truck, and we said, when the, the truck had, and we gave the truck a hundred thousand mile lifespan, and then it was there to keep.
Yeah.
And they took them.
That's an incentive to treat it good.
Yeah, it really is.
They took very good, most of them took very good care of it.
Yeah, yeah.
You just had to keep your eye on them in the last six months of its life, and it didn't get, uh, you know, four sets of tires and. And everything else, but it was a reasonably good expenditure.
Right.
Do we know how effective the, uh, retention bonus was that we gave a few years back? Do we have eighty percent, fifty percent, twenty percent?
The people that got the retention bonuses, all but one are still here. But that was, and, and the, that, that one person left for higher wages and better benefits.
Well, that's, what, eighty percent, so that's, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I don't kinda like the, um, the bonus approach instead of the car approach, um, just because it leaves, it seems to provide more, um, you know, flexibility to the, to the employee, who knows what their priority is?
Right.
And do they really want a town cruiser that they have to take home, or would they rather have a chunk of cash that they can use?
Yeah, um, you know, it's, it's, I know we've, we've talked about both, both ways, so I just, I wanted to run it before you guys, and just kinda get your, take the temperature of the room a little bit.
So anything, obviously, anything you under, anything you underspend this year is gonna roll into the unreserved fund balance, which is only gonna help offset next year's tax rate. That said, if you have extra funds in the police department budget for this reason, then it might make sense to purchase a, have a cruiser, if there's something available that can add.
And I'd like to think that the hiring, um, picture changes in the next two years, I don't know if it will or not, but be nice, a little bit.
Yeah, it, I can certainly support the idea of doing something, and what the right thing is. I mean, in the short run, it is, you know, a thirty-five thousand dollar cruiser one time, it's great. Going forward, it's really hard to take that benefit away.
It is, yeah.
And I, and I don't know, I don't know, to tell you, but I don't know how much that appeals to how many people. I, a lot of departments, you see officers take the cars home. I, I can tell you, having had a white Crown Victoria company car, at one point, it's the slowest way to go anywhere. Yeah, I would, I would, I would, that's, you're, you got, your call, doing something, and if it's buying a car, it's a little, and it's, it's a little risk endeavor.
Yeah, right.
I have a couple, little questions, they're nothing significant, I just wanna understand, if that's okay?
Yeah, please.
Um, two wages that went up a lot more than the four percent are the deputy town clerk going up sixty-four percent, and dispatch going up nine point two percent. Um, those changes in hours?
Yes, uh, let's see.
Deputy clerk is forty-one, forty point three.
What line is Kelly on?
Forty-one, forty point three.
Thank you.
So that is, um, because we didn't have a deputy town clerk the last two years, uh, per se, Jamie Hewer was, was our deputy, she left, but she stayed on as a, as a fill-in if we needed somebody. Um, so we, we reduced the wages. We now have a deputy town clerk that works sixteen hours a week. And that, sixteen hours and her, and her wage is, uh, is around, is right at eighteen thousand dollars.
I think that's the run rate for that position, Kelly, that's the eleven thousand last year that was, uh, abnormally low.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because, and if I remember when we assembled last year's budget, we didn't even think we were gonna have it. Sam was trying to hire somebody, and we didn't think that was gonna start until April or May, so it was only a partial year budget.
Okay.
And what was the other line, Kelly?
The other one was dispatch, um, line forty-two, twenty point five.
That fire dispatch?
It is, um, it is, uh, fire.
So.
Nine point two percent.
Yep, so that is a cost that we get from the capital area fire compact. They base it on, on call volume and their costs, um, which they, their costs have gone up. They're trying to, they're actually applying, applying for a federal grant to replace their complete radio system, uh, because it's, uh, decades old, so.
The bottom, the bottom line is, they tell you what it is and you don't have a choice.
Yeah, pretty much, same thing with the police dispatch, the county dispatch.
So these are the budget as submitted, right?
Correct.
Are, are you guys planning on making changes? Can we change that, that car trophy and W P T?
Oh, yeah.
What about the, the treasurer's salary? That's been controversial in the past, it's no, no increase in the budget, is that purpose, or?
So I didn't increase it, it depends on what the selectmen want, uh, I'm the one who prepared this, and we haven't had a chance to popularize it yet.
So self-hoping?
It's, yeah.
A source of frustration.
Well, it's a source of fairness, I mean, if, if other people are getting reimbursed or paid, why would that, that position, never mind the person, or would that position be left with no increase? Just asking.
We haven't done any of the other inquiries, really?
Yeah, I, I mean, we, I based the wage increases for all the other departments on the CPI, which is three point seven, so we, I put it at four percent. We haven't really, I gave the selectmen the proposed wages, uh, we haven't had any real hard discussions about that.
Yeah, I can tell you, my, my perspective of all this time has been that that position as it's currently listed is, is, is overpaid for what it does and delivers to the town, and it's an elective position, and, um, there are opportunities to actually reduce the amount of time and hours it takes to do the job that the current occupant of that job refuses to do. So, um, this has been a source of some friction for some time.
And, well, just refreshing our memory, at town meeting last year, the town meeting voted the increase. So, I mean.
Yep.
You got your work in hot place, I mean, I, I'm not advocating anything, I'm just saying.
Life is simpler if you just throw the CPI increase on it, take your fights, and it's worth it.
What about, what about the?
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, what about the?
No, it's not.
The one year we did, I thought they were gonna take us on a term.
It should be an increase in the social.
The selectmen have had one raise since nineteen seventy-nine.
Right.
It should be, it should be increased.
I don't think I get to do that, I'm not on the board anymore. I would support an increase in selecting compensation, now that, now that I am not on the board, I would support.
And now that I'm not gonna be on the board, yeah. The, the number of hours that. The, the number of hours that put in.
It's incredible.
We're fortunate that we still are able to maintain a part-time town government. There are already very few towns that are still able to do that.
Yeah. That guy, right there.
Yep.
Why would you?
Well, the reason they work so much is I keep sending them stuff.
Yeah, right.
The energizer body, you gotta do this.
The tre, the treasurer here today is only at about half of the expenses, that some of the hours can vary a lot?
The what?
The treasurer's position, year-to-date spending is only twenty-seven oh five.
He only wants to get paid when the taxes come up.
Oh, twice a year, I see. Got it, didn't realize that.
Yeah, we pay twice a year.
It's not, it's a stipend, not a rate, like, the selectmen get paid once a year.
I think, Kelly, you did a great job.
Thank you.
It's not easy, you know.
Yeah, that's great, no, if I, yeah, the only thing I did to your spreadsheet was I took the blank lines out of it so that I could filter.
Okay.
Gotcha.
That's a good point.
So, then you can have columns, and I have col, I add columns for things that I flagged for healthcare or wages so I can quickly, quick, quick filter and grab the component parts.
That idea, I'm gonna steal that.
So, we are, uh, one, one expense we're looking at an increase is, uh, the cost for QuickBooks. Um, we were told that by our QuickBooks, um, what are, what would you call that person? That QuickBooks advisor?
Salesperson, she was, she was a salesperson.
Yeah, so we were told that the QuickBooks version we have is, is well over, uh, used.
And it's very.
Yeah, it made, it wa, it was not built to support what we're doing with it. So, we're gonna have to change to, uh, QuickBooks Online. Right, no, oh, okay, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're gonna have to change, we're gonna have to buy some new software, so, uh, it's gonna be.
Not a, not the subscription model, yeah.
It is a subscription model.
But you're gonna buy it, yeah.
Um, they don't offer, um, the choice to buy it anymore, you have to change the subscription. And it's like three thousand two hundred year now, instead of the, like, seven hundred for payroll plus, what was it? One thousand eighteen hundred, three years ago, so, um, it's going up.
It's gonna be annual, right?
Annual, yeah, three thousand two hundred, at least this year. And we couldn't get a contract to say it won't go up more in the next few years, they. Do you know what you're switching to? I know that in April, I have it in my calendar to look up QuickBooks alternatives. Well, I can, I ask because at where I work, we are doing the exact same thing, and we switched to something called Sage Impact, I think. I, I saw that, I saw, um.
Isn't there like a municipal, a beauty spa or something like that?
We get, we get, uh, emails from different companies that provide, uh, financial software to municipalities. So, we'll, we'll look into it. And NHMA has some references on that too, for different municipalities, so we'll look into that.
Isn't it, like, that, the beauty spa or something?
Well, at, at the expense, at the possibility that I might get in trouble, I really think because the selectmen are in awkward position to give themselves a raise, it seems to me that if, if we had twelve thousand dollars in there instead of nine thousand, that would give each selectman, uh, four thousand dollars, which is a bargain and a half anyway. But, uh, it, that might be a starting point. But I, I think we should consider some increase.
I would support that, oh, I support that, thank you. Thank you.
Me too.
You can send me the check after.
What's your cut? What's your percent?
Half of the increase, what do you think? Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you, as you go through this, if, if you're unable to sleep some night, you want to go through it, or you put yourself to sleep, and you find it, find something, please don't hesitate to, to send me an email or give me a call during business hours. Not at two o'clock in the morning when you can't sleep.
When you make your revisions, if you want to send the self-version, yeah.
And everybody knows, now you have a Manhattan.
There you go. At least you're not following it in this time.
That's right.
Kelly, you have some conservation?
You're getting ready for town meetings, if you want me to come there and kind of roll through what the white lot set was.
Yep.
Yes.
You know, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, bye.
Thanks, Paul.
Good to see you, Bob. Good to see you. Yeah, long time, I've been anxious, how are you doing?
So, back when we were talking about getting municipal societies help for.
Really, really?
Sorry, I forgot to, I'm taking a share. So, it's the same project.
Well, yeah, so what that means, is they don't get paid anymore, they'll have three nonprofit projects.
Uh, we're going forward, we're not, we're not getting any federal money associated with it, but we're working with, by Forest Conservation Trust. And, um, and then they pass the project down essentially to the forest society. So, this has been a friendly project, under consideration by the forest society, but I let them know that it was very much of interest for us to have it done. It became a primary project for them. So, I gave you some statistical, you know, information about the property there. Five hundred and twenty acres, it's between two large blocks of conserved land. With more than nineteen hundred and fifty, um, acres of conserved land. It's got some historic values on it. We'll be going for, so the forest society will be running the project, and they will hold the easement. Um, we'll be going for L chip funding, moose plate funding, mayor met conservation partnership funding, the town of Canterbury, of course, and private fundraising. And I threw a map on the back, it's a little fuzzy, sorry, but, um, it shows you what the parcels of conserved land are that this big parcel sits between. So, I just wanted to let you know we're moving ahead with it. Um, it will be relatively costly compared to what we've spent on most of our, um, conservation projects in the past. We don't have an appraisal yet, uh, so I, I haven't seen a budget yet, but we were ballparking it before it, or, you know, in the more than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars probably total. So, a significant contribution from the Land Use Change Tax Fund. And one question we don't have to get into tonight, but should consider is, um, when we make a financial contribution to a project where we're not gonna hold the easement, we could request to be, have an executory interest in the easement, which means if the primary easement holder should fail to exist and do their, or to do their job, we could take over that responsibility. I've generally, um, advocated that we not do that because I don't think town volunteers are really well set to do that. And, um, if any, a private land trust like the Forest Society or Five Rivers, if they should fail, I believe they already have the state as a backup anyway. So, I think the, um, in terms of ongoing monitoring expenses and enforcement process, I just don't think towns are really well equipped to do this, uh, unless we make that, that new, uh, part-time land management position, make it full-time, and then, then we could do it. So, it's something we'd want to consider, uh, is, just for you all to be aware, it's an option. We'd want to bring it up fairly early. With the forest society, if we wanted that executory interest, I think it's called, um, I don't, just my personal view is that, that I don't see a strong reason for the town to do it. Do you have any questions about the project?
To what, to buy this, or?
No, 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 so, so the project will go ahead, and the forest society will hold the easement. But because we're putting funds into it, we could ask to essentially be backup in terms of having responsibility for the easement. Um, we, years ago, we passed a town meeting, the, um, approved adopted state statute that allows us to make financial contributions to a project in which we do not hold an interest. So, we don't have to take that interest. And I kind of see it as like putting us on a hook, on the hook for a job we aren't really fit to do. So, that's, that's how I see it. And timeline is, I forgot to put that part in here. I think, you know, we'll do the L chip next summer, um, fundraising in the fall, and look to close, I think, in twenty twenty-five, hopefully early. Any questions?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, exciting. And also, um, the Deep Woods Conservation Trust, the one that, that the Stern family initiated, they had some delays in getting surveyors, et cetera, so they were having, they're not gonna be able to close this year. They're gonna, they're planning to close it, like, January, first week of January. I forget the exact date, but, so that will soon be done. And I haven't been up there yet, but I have heard from everybody who's gone up that they've built really lovely trails, a really nice parking area, and it's a great asset to the town.
Is it gonna be on our trails map, or is it open to walking on, or is it?
Well, um, we don't really have a trails map, so that, and, well, you mean the one that the, um, regional planning commission did. I can check and see if that's, it may already be on there. Yeah, there's no reason it shouldn't be, because it is open to the public, they, they welcome and encourage people to go up there and enjoy it. Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
You are.
Thanks, Kelly. Kelly, did you get my emails the other day about Chris?
Yes, yeah, and he did the mowing.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, we, we've been making some efforts to do, um, be more aggressive about taming the invasives on the riverland property. Uh, so, we did an additional mowing just last week of, um, the, the portion of the land that the town actually owns, the sort of the, an open fields type portion, but the neighbor, one of our butters had been mowing it on a volunteer basis for several year, for many years. But he had fallen behind, he hadn't gotten to it the last couple of years, so things were growing up. So, I had Chris Akins, the contractor, the town uses to mow the roadways, um, come back and mow it down for us so that we could get in there and see, like, what we need to do by hand, um, chainsaw, et cetera, and try and keep the invasives down. So, we will probably be, you may have seen in the budget, we increased our land maintenance line a little bit. And one of the reasons is we simply need to mow more properties more frequently, um, to try and keep the invasives from getting to the point where they seed, so the birds can carry the seeds everywhere and spread them around.
It'll be interesting watching, because we got the same thing encroaching out everywhere.
Everywhere, yeah, yeah, it's, it's really hard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Goodnight, Bob.
Thanks again.
Bye.
Hi, y'all.
Joe, John next?
Nope. Nope, he's here for entertainment.
This is gonna be very short and sweet. Uh, it's a very simple zoning problem or occurrence, let me put it that way. I'll give you a brief history of this, how this evolved. Months ago, before anything happened with the transition at the store, I was at the store, the Balshaws were there, we'd had a preliminary meeting with them, and I walked by and they said, "We're thinking about putting all these, these small signs out in front of the store, what do you think about that?" And I said, "Well, uh, it's illegal, zoning says you can have one sign." So, you go two months, whatever it's been, I don't know, so they put the signs up. Instead of coming here, I went directly to the LLC, because they own the building and the signs are on the building. Their attitude was, they didn't really want to do anything. So, I ran up by the zoning board our last meeting, and they encouraged me to come and bring it to you guys, because you have enforcement. So, that's where it is. I don't, I don't understand part of it, because Kevin Bragg's the chairman of the Historic District Commission, and he's on that board. And he didn't want to do anything. Now, you put the wrong window in your house, they're gonna make you take it out. Paint the wrong color, they'll make you paint the house. It's, if you read this, there isn't any wiggle room. There isn't any at all. You can't change it by a special exception. It very specifically says, "One sign." And the Balshaws knew that before they put the signs up, and the LLC knows that. So, I'm just saying, for, for what it's worth, you guys can do something, nobody else has enforcement. That'll do it. Let me know what you decide, would you, please?
Yes, we will.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Do you have anything else? What's the point on your day this month?
I don't know, I just look.
I was asking Scott.
I, I don't know.
I will, uh, send you the permanent zoning warnings on the signs.
Yeah, that's, certainly, I'd like to look at that.
Yeah.
It seems like the regulation applies to the name of the business that's in there, doesn't it? The one sign.
Commercial advertising signs shall be limited to onsite locations only and to one per business enterprise. Except for temporary signs advertising sale of agricultural products. All signs shall be limited to ten square feet per side or twenty, twenty square feet total, whichever is less, the overall height. Free standing signs is limited to ten feet above the grade. Then it goes on about external illumination, um, can endanger the driving public, no electronic, uh, no internally illuminated, uh, no animated software control, no windblown devices, evidence inflated, uh, no changing text, um, it's all on and so forth.
So, does the, I'm, I'm just going off memory, isn't there a sign above the entrance to the store? Like, above the roof?
Yeah.
Right?
It's got, it's got a light on it too, the exterior.
Yeah.
Which is allowed. Exterior illumination is allowed.
And then you've got the one for the post office too, I think there's a sign for that.
Which there has to be, right? I think so.
Big things, yeah.
Uh, well, and it says, "One per business enterprise." So, if you had multiple occupations there, you're gonna have multiple signs.
That's gonna be a fun one to think about, isn't it?
Yes. Send us.
I'll send, I'll send you a copy of it, and, and, uh, you can let me know how you guys feel as far as talking to the county officer bonus.
All right.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.